Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the September seventeenth meeting of the Warren Zoning Board of Appeals. Uh, Board of Review. Appeals is different. Um, my name is Jason Raynon. I am your chairman and emcee for the evening. To my right is uh, Jason Nystrom. To his right is Michael Alves. Then we have David Rodriguez.
Bert.
And, hmm, Bert Rodriguez and David Francis. Did you lean forward at the wrong time and all of a sudden I get confused? Um, we do have a quorum this evening, so we will be conducting business as usual. A couple of quick procedural notes. When we call the application, we will ask whoever is present for the application to come up to the podium. Uh, state your name and current address for the record and tell us a little bit about what you would like to do. We'll have a period of public comment for each application. Once that public comment is completed, the applicant will be invited back to say any closing remarks, answer any questions that may have come up. And then the board will decide how to move forward with the application. Uh, the first order of business for the evening is the approval of the minutes for both our July, no, sorry. Burla minutes for the August twentieth meeting.
Like a motion that we, uh, that we approved as, as read.
Second. We have a motion and second. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Meeting minutes are approved. There are no administrative matters this month, so moving on to old business, we'll start with application ZB twenty-five nineteen. Club Recreativo Cultural PO owner and Sandra Maderos applicant. One thirty-two Child Street, Plat Map nine, lot thirty-one. Request for a special use permit to allow outdoor dining in the billet, business zoning district.
Sandra Maderas, thirty-one Hamlet Court, Bristol, Rhode Island.
Good to see you again. When we last met our faithful heroes, we had asked you to submit a, some sort of a site plan so that we could get a better idea of where this outdoor seating was going to be located. Uh, we have received that in our packet. Um, I will open it up to the board for questions, comments, thoughts on that site plan as circulated.
So just so we're clear, the area that you submitted, it's, you're kind of like outlined in red, the twenty-five by twenty-five box?
Right.
Okay. One, one of the questions that I note while I have is where that's placed, that's right at where you would turn um, for the parking lot, it looks like to act for access. Are you going to be restriping or you changing any of the navigational areas of the parking lot in that area?
I was thinking just putting up a partition. Um, really, nobody uses that area unless there is um, some kind of a dinner going on upstairs in the hall or a feast.
All right. One of my concerns is uh, access for uh, you know, public safety. Um, you, you know, because it is a one directional to kind of move around. I'll ask the building official, is this anything we need to get fire marshal comments on?
I wouldn't, um, I mean, we could, we could talk to the fire chief, but my uh, recommendation, uh, due to the fact that it's going to be in an active parking lot, that there would be some sort of barrier installed in case we had some vehicle that went astray. I don't want to see someone sitting out there and enjoying a nice meal and get hit by a vehicle uh, that because of the proximity to the parking lot. I know in, in certain uh, locations in town, they've put bollards or they, they've put some sort of uh, wooden barrier or jersey barriers, but I just would say if this is going to get approved, if we could have some sort of barrier that would protect the patrons from the vehicles in the parking lot.
Yeah, I mean, the only concern that I have is that your line parking is angled. Where you have to back up and you have to go towards that structure. And you're taking out that angle to be able to get out of the park. If people have to, you know, are all parked at that angle, you gotta back out and get out of there quickly for some reason. That's going to be an obstruction. You see what I'm saying? It's angled so that you have to, you have to, it's angled so you have to come out.
Uh, yeah, but they can, uh, I'm not sure that that. But it's actually afforded a better turning radius and allows them easier move throughout the parking lot. I'm more concerned with the direction signs that are on the ground itself. It could be a little confusing.
Okay.
Um, I mean, I think absent those directive signs that you have, I don't see a problem with it personally. Who do you guys think if, that those arrows were removed or at least you had better direction, a better flow mapped out?
I went in there, I parked, went to go pack up, to, to, to do an angle to get, oh, you know, pull out left to get out of there. That pocket space that's right on that corner there, that's gonna have to go because there's no way they're gonna be able to angle that to get, to get past these cars if that's the full parking lot. And that triangle there is, you know, is not supposed to be touched because you're not supposed to come near those cars over there. So I mean, I just think it's impeding personally, well, you see the arrow, that's one arrow that goes and then it's an arrow that's right in the center of that twenty-five by twenty-five. Which means the angle of direction that they're supposed to be doing is pulling it out to the right and going to the left and coming out of it.
I, I think an engineer would need to speak to this. Um, I don't think that we're qualified to talk about um, the, the actual, you know, movement around there. But I think part and parcel of the, the, what looks problematic is just the old directives and signs and, and lines that you have.
Right.
So is there a way to accommodate that space so that it's safer? Uh, maybe can uh, change how you have laid out the arrows and whatnot?
Most likely.
I think one of the things that would concern me about permanently changing the arrows, for example, painting over them, would be that then the directionality indicated on the ground does not necessarily match the striping to Michael's point.
Well, I think you have to reconsider all of it at that point. I think you'd have to remap it.
True. I, I think one of the things that we're hearing in the testimony is nobody uses that back line of spaces under normal circumstances. So I guess my question to the solicitor is, would it be allowable to condition our, if we were to approve this, could we condition it on that area of seating can only be used in instances where the parking necessity is less than eighty percent of the spots? If these are the least required spots in the lot, we may be, you know, detailing over a moot point and we can simply say if there is a large enough event where those spots are necessary, you can't also have the outdoor seating.
I just uh, here we come, Boston. I'm concerned if someone's gonna regulate eighty percent. What's the, like, get a few to the pound that eighty percent, not gonna use either of those?
Hmm, and, and then you're taking abroad, you're taking away spaces and if she's having an event, she's gonna need more space. So what's fair, right? Uh, I think what's safe is fair, right? And, and who determines that at this?
Yeah, I guess one, the only, I'm, I'll just, I'm, I'm not opposed to having outdoor dining here. Um, but I'm just trying to think, is looking at the, the way the lot is currently laid out, the curb cut where you would act and access being kind of the ramp way to get in is, it's not shown on what was given to us, but it's more. Yeah, the only way to access the back area, um, that the spots we're talking about is you have to pull in, take a right, kind of drive back and then you take a left to get to those spots, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Um.
Because we have two parking lots. Most people park in the lot if you're facing the front of the building. Most people park in the lot to the left.
Yeah, to the other side of the building.
Which is not this side.
No, I understand. I'm talking about just the lot on, if you're looking at the building to the right. Um, so if this, without having like a restriping or, you know, redirecting, you're really gonna make it, there's no way for those cars to in that area to get out, it seems like, if you're going to, you know, stay strictly within the confines of that, of the lane. Um, the only question I've got then is, are we essentially then, if we were to approve this, are we essentially de facto nullifying those spots?
So, so that was, uh, going back to the chair's initial question. Um, I, I do think that you can put the condition that a parking plan, an updated parking plan has to be provided that needs to be approved, not only by the building official, but also the fire marshal. I think at that point, we'll cover the safety basis and making sure that there's enough parking spots for what activities are at the building. I think you can do that.
Yep.
That, that's something that would satisfy me.
Yeah, and I think personally, I think if that parking plan were to include something like if the outdoor seating is being used, put orange cones in the nearest three spots in each of those rows so that people can't park there.
Right.
And if someone does decide to park in the back and needs a way around, you can move a cone and there's plenty of room to be able to get a car through.
Mr. Chair, quite frankly, I don't know how this initially got approved. I'm not sure if there's a parking plan, uh, some type of plan in place on the record here that once it was looked at by the fire marshal, everything looked okay, but now we're kind of alternate. So I think those two conditions would satisfy a lot of the board's members' concerns.
Um, the other piece is, I think if you take the spaces that are, are um, not being affected, that row, and you just mirror that row behind it instead of have that egress and use the slanted spaces as the area for egress.
Instead of the ones right next.
Then you're just backing up and pulling out and you have a nice row there. I think it, it satisfies it. And you keep, you keep the, the actual traveling here and you're just mirroring what's, what's here. Um, I think that's much more efficient just than looking at it, but that's just my opinion in my engineering.
Um, are there any other immediate questions from the board?
Um, is it just gonna be, you're gonna have a tent put up or is it a pergola or?
Just like um, umbrellas, tables and umbrellas.
Okay, all right.
And just to kind of, just as a reminder, um, and then we did talk about timing and you were only looking to do it seasonal, five to nine P M. Um, we're planning an alcohol service which uh, was it five to nine, uh, five, uh, seven days a week or particular days you're looking at?
Mostly on Fridays unless it, there's some kind of a function, um, like a, like for example, a clambwell or something, which we usually get a special permit for anyway.
All right, so if you're asked, perfect, wrong, Mr. Chair, if, are we gonna, are, are we, are we going to need to set um, hours to be allowable or are we just allowing it to exist?
What are the current operating hours of the club itself?
Well, right now, um, the kitchen's open at night on Fridays from five to nine, but it is open daily at noon.
Gotcha. But the function that would be looking to use an outdoor seating area only exists from five to nine Fridays? Okay. So I think making, making this contingent on the same hours as the kitchen that would want the outside dining.
Okay.
I think that's reasonable.
I'm gonna still have to be in the bathroom. I mean, it's never, I mean, those two parking spaces that are behind are not gonna be able to be utilized anyway. There's no way you can put that twenty-five by twenty-five in those spot. Basically, you can still have that, that turn.
The thing with that is that it's kind of far from where the kitchen is. I mean, we potentially could do it that way. It's just, it's a longer, well.
I agree with this, Ralph. That, that was one of the concerns, but that's where I think by conditioning the requirement on um, submitting it like, yeah, a, a new parking plan essentially for approval, I think that, you know, could remedy some of the concerns, you know? It does seem to me that they're gonna have to rejig some of this.
Yeah.
But I don't think that, you know, it's necessarily our job to redesign it for them, but I, I, I get the concerns.
Yeah, I just feel like there's certain people sitting there and all, all of people is being so close without like a fencing or something a little more.
Well, and to, to the building official's um, point, I do think a barrier of some kind would be in order, because I agree with you. I don't think like a velvet rope kind of stanchion would necessarily be protection enough. Now, we could probably have a discussion about what qualifies as a barrier. My inclination would be to say we leave that up to the building official for his, you know, belief as to what is an appropriate division for the parking lot. Knowing that it needs to be removable because obviously the, the dining area won't always be there.
Will there be any outside music?
No, when we do that, we get special permits. It's mostly for the feast.
Okay, so when people are dining there, there will be any type of music whatsoever?
Any other initial questions? All righty, you can stay right there because I'm guessing, do we have anyone in the public that would like to speak on this matter? So we will consider the public comment portion opened and closed. Is there anything else that you would like us to know?
No, thank you.
Is there any further discussion, questions or a motion on this matter?
Make a motion to approve?
Okay, go for it.
Make a motion to approve application ZB two-five-one-nine, the Club Recreativo Culture um, PO, owner and Sandra Maderas applicant, one thirty-two Child Street, Plat Map nine, lot thirty-one. Request for a special use permit to allow outdoor dining in the business zoning district. The special use will be compatible with the neighboring, uh, neighboring land uses. Are there, there's restaurants in the area that uh, do have some uh, outdoor dining? Uh, the special use will not create um, any hazards in the neighborhood as there's no testimony here to contradict that. Uh, the special use permit will be compatible with the community and the comprehensive plan. Uh, and it will definitely serve the uh, public convenience and welfare uh, will be served. Uh, some additions to this uh, approval that the applicant uh, sees it, that the, they insert some type of uh, protection ballards which will be approved by the building inspector. Is that correct, Mr. Chair?
Correct.
Uh, parking will be also reviewed by the uh, fire chief to determine safety.
So as a, as a condition of this, you will need to submit an updated uh, parking plan?
Okay.
Just indicating how the parking will be adjusted to compensate for the loss of the space.
It needs to be approved. Approved by, by the commission and by, it's made very clear it's the case.
So that will be, have to be approved by the building official and also the fire, fire chief. Um, the business hours for this special use permit um, application will coincide with the hours of operation of the restaurant that's located inside. And uh, that's pretty much it.
There is a motion made to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made. Uh, one, two, three, four. Nope, we've got five. So you're up? All the way, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
No. I still have concerns on that.
Understood.
On the health and safety.
Four to one, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Yep. All righty. Moving on to the second old business, let's do application ZB dash twenty-five dash twenty. The return on main owner, Vara Hodges applicant, one thirty-six Main Street, Plat Map one, lot seventeen. Request for a variance to allow a fence in the rear yard greater than six feet in height in the R six zoning district. Good to see you again.
Smile.
And for the record, we had a site visit at the property at six P M this evening. Uh, and for the record, we will simply say that the proceedings of that site visit will be entered into the record uh, so that we may all move forward with that information. That being said, uh, the members of the board that were present at that site meeting were myself, Mr. Nystrom, Mr. Alves and Mr. Rodriguez, which means that we will be the only four voting members on this uh, particular matter because we have been privy to all of the information for this application. Uh, that being said, four people is enough to do business and it does require four votes to pass. So the decision would need to be unanimous in order to move forward. With that being said.
Um, Bianca Brunash, um, address is fifty East Clinton Street, New Bedford, Massachusetts, oh, two, seven, four, zero.
Excellent. So based on the information that we gathered at the site visit, is there any additional questions or concerns?
I have none.
I have none.
Just want to reiterate, the fence is, is currently existing as six feet and the proposal is going to be eight feet. So it's your estimate for a variance of two feet, correct?
Correct.
And again, just to clarify, this is only going to be for the uh, existing grill patio area where the wood fence, that six foot wood fence currently exists?
Correct.
The, if I'm understanding correctly, the eight foot section will actually be smaller than the existing wood fence.
Yes, it will, it won't fall along the whole fence, but for the pathway for us to be able to bring the trash in and out.
Yeah, it, yeah, because I believe some of the wood fence is the six feet and there's other parts that are a little shorter than that, right? Right?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, I was just asking about the current existing, the six foot, that's what's gonna be replaced.
Yes, but not all, all of it.
Okay.
Okay. Um, as we discussed on site, the replacement of the fence will not have any adverse react, uh, adverse impact on the arborvities that are on the neighbor's property or anything along those lines.
No.
Okay. Um, and for the record, we did determine that uh, the fence itself is approximately uh, thirty-four inches away from the protruding window on the neighboring property. And being that far away and only being two feet higher, it does appear that there will still be uh, daylight penetration into those windows. So we are not in a situation where we think uh, that this variance would uh, block daylight access or adversely affect the neighboring.
And I will say, Mr. Chair, it was a little further out, um, that thirty-six by where that bump out was, um, further down, um, you, the, the distance is actually greater. It was like close to fifty-nine, which is by my measurements.
Excellent. Is there any other questions from the board? I think you can stay there as I do not see anybody else for this application, but for the record, is there anyone who would like to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we will say that the public portion has been opened and closed. Is there anything else that you would like us to know about the project?
No.
Is there any further discussion or is someone ready to make a motion on this matter? Yeah?
Just give me one sec. I move approval of application ZB dash twenty-five dash twenty, return on main owner and Varga Hodges applicant. One thirty-six Main Street, Plat Map one, lot seventeen, request for a variance to allow it in its rear yard greater than six feet in height in the R six zoning district. In uh, granting approval, we find that the hardship with the app applicant seeks relief is due to the unique characteristics of the subject lander's structure and as to the general characteristics of the surrounding area and not due to the physical or, physical or economic disability of the applicant. Um, we do note that this part of town, um, the lots are tight, the buildings are all very close together. Um, there is an existing six foot fence. Um, in the request to put this up, the primary concerns were involving um, in, involving adequate light and ventilation to the adjacent properties. We find that that um, the concern for that is due to the unique situation of how close these buildings are built. We find that the hardship is not the result of any prior action of the applicant. The, there is currently existing a six foot fence. The request is to raise it an additional two feet. Um, so there is, there are existing fencing, fence, fencing in the area. Um, we find that the, in granting the requested, uh, granting this request, the variance will not alter the general character of the surrounding area or impede or the intent, impede or impair the intent um, or purposes of the zoning ordinance of the comprehensive plan in which that zoning, zoning ordinance is based. Um, this part of town, there are a lot, there are a lot of fences, um, there are already um, arborvitie uh, to one of the adjacent property owners certainly will not offend. The arborvitie provides similar uh, privacy and shade protection uh, for a different property. So this, the sort of relief that's being sought, and again, the reason for this fence is for privacy. There are other properties in the area, indeed throughout this part of town where um, you know, landowners have taken steps to increase their privacy erecting or allowing of things to grow. And, and granting the uh, dimensional variance, the hardship suffered by the owner of the subject property where this not to be granted would be more than a mere inconvenience. Uh, meaning that the relief sought is minimal to a reasonable enjoyment of the permitted use to which the property is proposed to be devoted. The reason, there's been testimony given that the reason for this fence increase is to um, increase privacy with a grill in guest area. Uh, this is an Airbnb in town. Um, the current concrete slab on which the grill in a recreation area, for lack of better words, is uh, bare cement, um, what has been proposed is this more spa setup. Um, including showers and saunas and uh, having increased privacy there, I think so would satisfy that, that component. Um, it just, I just want to memorialize, we did uh, conduct a site visit. And uh, based on the site visits, we uh, we do find that this variance is reached.
All righty. Motion made to approve. Is there a second? Bert?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Good luck to you.
Prior to, so because this is greater than six feet, you're gonna have to get a building permit. Um, so just let the owner know that they are gonna have to apply for building permit to the fence. Normally, we don't have a building permit for fence, but because it's greater than six, they're gonna have to go.
All right, understood. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
All righty, moving on to something new. Application ZB dash twenty-five dash twenty-five, Colin Freitas and Amy Akili, owner and applicant, nineteen Napoleon Street, Plat Map eight, lot twenty-eight, request for dimensional variance to construct a front porch with less than the required front yard setback in an R six zoning district.
Hey, Colin Freitas, nineteen Napoleon Street.
Excellent. So tell us a little bit about what you want to do.
So currently there's a four foot by four foot uh, deck platform that goes at the front door. They brought it out as well as the back deck, which I already got permit for. Um, so I did the new deck. My wife wanted rocking chairs and the deck to extend north to south fifteen feet, which is fine to go. Uh, but coming off the house east to uh, east to west, the six feet, I would fall at seventeen point five to the street line. So I, I need a variance of two point five feet in order to construct the uh, six foot width of the deck.
Okay. And that fifteen foot dimension, that is to the front edge of the deck or that is to the front edge of the steps coming off of the deck?
Uh, it's six feet off the face of the house and then if you're facing the house, you know, the south would be the fifteen foot. So I'm coming off of the house six feet and the length of the deck, so that's.
Sorry, yes, you're correct. Um, the seventeen and a half foot setback from the street.
Correct, would be to the face of deck.
That's the face of the deck. Do you know how far out the steps will extend?
Uh, I believe I'm only gonna do one at a, out of the two by six decking with the deck boards, so probably another, say, uh, they're five and a half, so eleven inches off.
Another eleven inches? Okay.
Okay, so yeah, so actually it's not a two and a half foot.
Correct, correct. Because the, unfortunately, the setback has to be to any of the built structures, so that would include the front, uh, the stairs. Um, so seventeen, six minus eleven, so we're at sixteen, seven.
Don't look at me, enter.
Yeah. Trying to do math in twelves. All right, so we are at sixteen foot, seven setback to the street from the edge of the stairs.
Instead of the seventeen five.
Say again? Instead of the seventeen five.
Fifteen what?
Uh, sixteen foot seven, so the necessary variance is thirteen foot, uh, sorry, three foot five.
Um, Bush, is this um, with these additions, are we gonna, are we running, are you, are you um, falling within the uh, prescribed lot coverage?
I believe so.
I'm just asking because if it turns out you're gonna be over, still, you, you're gonna have to come back. So I'm trying to, can we just confirm that that's not gonna be an issue now?
Let's see, lot area is sixty-nine, seventeen? Yep. Ask the building official, do we have a listing on the square footage, the footprint of this property?
Yeah, I believe I did it. Um, but I don't believe it was gonna be affected, but I will double check.
The lot area is sixty-nine, seven feet on page four. Seven.
Yeah, we just, we need the property footprint, the actual house. Yeah, we just, we need the property footprint, the actual house footprint.
Yeah, we have all that.
Good percentages. Sort out the percentage, yeah.
Yeah. It's so reliant on.
I have.
Believe the uh, the footprint foundation of the, the structure itself is seven seventy-two with the addition that was put on uh, two years ago. I don't have the new numbers for the uh side deck.
Um, that would probably sort out.
It was a twenty-five percent.
Yep, so. Side decks eight by eight, so that's gonna be sixty-four. Uh, so ninety square feet for the front. Yeah, ninety.
Yeah, we're just starting with the stairs, so.
Uh, well, maybe they'd be three feet wide and roughly a foot, so we're adding three.
Yeah, yeah, true.
So ninety-three square feet for the new deck. Added to seven seventy-two was the last square footage you knew?
Correct, yes.
Seven, seven, two, seven, seven, two. I'm getting eight sixty-five. Yeah, sixty-nine seventeen is the lot that's somewhere in the twelve and a half to thirteen percent range.
Alright, so it sounds like we're well within.
Yep.
Just want to make sure we're running into an issue.
We grant twenty-five.
Yeah, fifteen.
Alright, so you're.
Uh, so fifteen and we grant twenty-five.
Fifteen percent lock coverage with this new, um.
Yeah, there's no.
Yeah, so, yep. Perfect, okay.
Yeah, so really just looking for a variance then of uh, three and a half feet.
Yep.
No, no, uh, three feet, five inches.
And am I understanding correctly, you are along with the front deck, which is new structure, new footprint. You're also reskining the deck off the side of the building, but that's not changing size.
No, that did, but I already see permit.
Oh, that's already been done.
I just, yeah, I just finished that deck this week.
Perfect, nice. Alright, that makes sense. Any other questions or concerns from the board?
Uh, and it's your testimony that um, the reason why it needs to be this dimension is so that you can get uh more reasonable use out of the deck.
Correct.
Yeah, cool. Yeah, better access and having the rocking chairs there.
Correct. Alrighty. Well, as this has become the easiest part of my night, we will open and close the public comment section since we're now the only ones in the room. There any other questions or concerns from the board? Is anyone prepared to make a motion on this matter?
I'll make a motion.
Go for it.
Applicant, application number ZB two-five dash two-five, Colin Freitas and Amy Achilles, owner and applicant of nineteen Napoleon Street, plat map eight lot twenty-nine, request for a dimensional variance to construct a front porch with less than the required front yard setback in an R six zoning district. Applicant seeks a three point five inch variance for the addition of a deck that will be constructed uh on the west side of the building, fifteen by, would you say, six feet?
Correct.
Um, with the step approximately ninety-three um square feet. Um. This dimensional variance um is not due to a hardship or the unique characteristics of the subject land or structure of the surrounding area is not through the physical or economic disability of the applicant. Uh, hardship is not a result of any prior action of the applicant and does not result in a primary from the desire to realize a greater financial gain. Um, granting a variance will not alter the general characteristic of the surrounding area. And the request informs for the purpose and intent of the warm zoning ordinance of comprehensive plan. Um. The applicant will build this deck in accordance with all state, federal and local building codes and laws. He will make sure that it's safe and he will work with the building commission and the building officials, alright, uh, be sure that he is pulling all the proper permits and um, following all this correct building codes.
And uh. Were we to not grant this, this would amount to, amount to more than just a mere inconvenience. Uh, insofar as the uh rebuilding of the existing platform would not allow for uh greater access to the house and greater enjoyment of the property. Just to clarify, I will assume this is a motion to approve. I don't know that.
I'm sorry, yes, I should have opened.
Yes.
Fair.
Motion to approve.
By a second.
Are there any other comments or clarifications?
Did we, did, did we get the dimensions?
Yes, I believe we did. Uh, yes, three foot most. Yeah, three foot five.
Alright.
The necessary variance. Uh, motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good luck to you.
Thank you, Donald.
Thank you.
Enjoy your party.
Take care.
Uh, is there anything else to come before the board?
Just a question, Mr. Chair. Um, I believe at the most recent town council meeting, there was some talk about the zoning, planning, possible combination endeavor.
Seems there was a lot of talking.
Well, I was, yeah, it, is there, do we know, are there any plans or any action that we as a board need to take or get togethers, meet and greets, anything like that?
Only because, only because I'm a geek that reads the local newspaper, I believe there was discussion of possibly having some sort of a joint meeting. Uh, informational meeting of the planning and the zoning boards so that it could be discussed and members of those respective boards could give feedback. I know I have not seen any suggested dates or times for that meeting. Um, but I know that both that meeting and further discussion with the town council was noted as being in octo.
Do you think we need to have, make sure we have representation at council meetings going forward? If this is an agenda item to have us there, or do you think it's a?
My inclination is to say we probably need to make sure we would be represented at that discussion session. Depending on how that session turns out, I think it would probably make sense to uh, decide then whether or not we need, as a board, we need someone in the room. Um, but my guess is that the tenor and how that discussion goes between the two boards would probably be one of the things that would sort of determine what the best way forward is.
Council also uh, put out these cities, towns, was basically trying to get the pros and cons of anybody else through this, anybody on the track to do this, what are the positives, what are the negatives? Because everything has consequences, just not streamlined or something. And members of the council and public all kind of said, you know, there's so many unknowns. Um, then, and then uh followed by the legal part where it's gonna be, it ever happens, so if it does happen or maybe it will happen. Um, the charter changed, there's a lot of stuff that it's gonna take some time, it's gonna happen rather quickly because of the need for the election on the charter change. Uh, but I think you'll get more information as to exactly what it means to combine both and what would it look like and is a town wanna be in the front of this thing or, you know, uh, basically weigh.
When you say combined, it's just that they're gonna do, do them on the same day or?
No, just one, one approval. And give that board um, the authority, um, similar to what the planning board has now under the comprehensive primary application, basically they have all the authority.
Right, but isn't the power of the zoning board that if something happens within the planning board that needs, needs more clarity before it goes to.
So that was brought up.
That is one of those questions.
That was, somebody raised that question. That was a lot of unknowns appeal with the appeals.
Okay.
We have one board, um, all those, a lot of those issues were raised.
And then all appeals will go directly to Supreme Court if we're making it one, right?
Well, so the, I guess, the current way that it's set up is if somebody needs to appeal a planning board decision or a historical board decision, we sit as the board of appeals for those decisions to determine whether or not planning or historic overstepped before it goes to Superior Court. So then the question becomes if planning and zoning are one entity, they obviously can't appeal themselves. So yes, that's a valid. The question is, would it then have to go straight to?
And the larger piece is the planning board, the historic, where they're, they're more policy setting, where we're more implementation and code regulate, you know, we regulate the code relative to, you know, what's on the books.
So yeah.
Combining those two functions together, is it in the best interest? Because oftentimes you need them separate and distinct.
Yeah, there was, I think, what I was, what I was reading phrased it as the planning board is what does the town wanna do, the zoning board is what can the town legally allow?
Yeah.
And those two uh different viewpoints make a difference.
Yeah.
Um, so yeah, it's definitely something that is being discussed and needs to be discussed more. So yeah, I guess the big question would be what is this suggested date to sort of get all the kids in the same room and see if we plan the same sandbox?
So if I, if I could, um, because I was at the council meeting and been involved in this, um. I guess, proposal. So there's, we've, we've realized that this is a very hot topic, that this is something that's not just gonna be done one night and we're gonna go and say this is what the board is. So there's gonna be a lot of input, um, there's gonna be a lot of uh public input. And one of the big things that was brought up that night was this board and the planning board coming together for a workshop. And I believe that was and correct me if I'm wrong, that was one of the things that they talked about is having, is putting together a workshop. So I would say, you know, keep an eye on this, watch it. Um, if there's anything that we think that, you know, you it's, it's nothing that's gonna be, if, if there's gonna be input, you guys will be notified. This board will be present, this board will be notified, the other boards will be notified. So I think, you know, just watch it, see, put together what you believe. Um, one of the, one of the issues um that has come up with the new laws is the unified development. And on the unified development, this board doesn't sit on, on an issue. So where it used to go, where you had something that would go from planning and then zoning, it just goes to planning. So I think that's kind of why there, this isn't just to the town of Warren, this is throughout the whole state. There's several municipalities looking at this. The state legislation is looking at this as potential uh passing into law to have it throughout the whole state. So it, it's just, we're not, this is just something that if we were to go to, um, we'd be one of the first ones to go to, but I think there's a lot of other communities that are looking into it. Um, but a- anywhere I can be of help, um, I mean, shoot, shoot over emails, let me know what you think, what your thoughts, because you know, we see it from one perspective and, you know, you guys have different ideas and perspectives and a couple of you have been here longer than I have been here, so just giving us an idea and, and uh what we can look at, but that, this is, this is gonna be something that like Ben said, it may move quickly because we'd have to get on the ballot, but it's not gonna be moved in a, in a, just a erratic way. It's gonna be very well thought and thought out and everybody will have their, their time.
So what would be helpful, I think, is if we had some sort of legal brief or treatise on what is the current positions of both of those boards? What do they do? What are their functions? What are their roles? You know, what are the conflicts um that would come by creating them? You know what I mean? To have some sort of legal documents. It's a, a public administrative function that where.
Helping out with that type of like uh, analysis to present. And they really like the two holes that each one has and whether or not they click, whether or not they're on the same page and ways of conflicts, how do you handle those, um, efficient, it's not efficient, um, so we talked about I shall, I've got counsel of public, but now you give one board all the authority versus a couple different layers. I mean, there's there's a lot of things that, I think, ladies cities is capital, that information, that's why I consider it a workshop. Somebody will come, or is it that, or will we just, you know, give two board boards and all stakeholders saying this is what we have, this is what, no, these are, you know, the cons and, and I think that at that point, a little more educated about possibilities, you know, and I just kind of bring it in having fun.
Is there any municipalities that have this implemented now or have tested it? Did it test study on it?
I think there might be.
There's, there's a couple of municipalities that are working and looking at this. Um, this goes hand in hand with all the new laws that came out. Um, and it basically the new laws, just to kind of put a whole, just topic sentence, if you may, on it is streamlined. You know, so the developers wanted to streamline the, the process and it's become streamlined and part of the streamlining would be under the U D R, which is to go to one board and not have to go, you know, back and forth, planning board, zoning board. Uh, I, I anticipate this room not being able to handle the amount of people that are come out on this issue. So this is gonna, this is gonna be something that everyone's gonna have their, their input and something that the town, I mean, I'm, I'm not gonna it's for myself, but I, it seems like the, the flavor of the town is that we're gonna listen to everyone and take into consideration, because like I said, it's, we see it through one view. But then everybody else may see different, you know, unfortunately, right now, there is a bad taste in people's, in citizens' mouth because of the comprehensive permit and what happened in certain projects and under the comprehensive permit, that's one board. So there's a, there's many people who say in their mind, putting the two boards together is that, that's what it's gonna do. When that's, that wasn't the intent. The intent is to streamline and also make sure that it's, you know, one body uh, looking over it.
So is this, the genesis of this then is coming from the legislature? Um, is that what?
Yeah, there's, um, I didn't, I was, yeah, I'm sorry, we kind of got off. I was just curious, like, is there anything we should be doing? But, um, yeah, Dave, there is a statute, um, it came out and identifies if you're gonna do it, this is a form requirement, this is the amount of people that's on there.
Interesting.
I'll, I'll go Google when we're done, but uh, yeah, we're.
That's fine, I'm fine.
Yeah, it's always good. Alright, sorry, guys.
So yeah, it definitely, it'll be, it'll be something to watch because it's gonna be a topic. I mean, the earliest at this point that it could be implemented would be start of calendar year twenty twenty-seven.
Good.
Because the charter changes that would allow it to be okay in this town would have to go on the ballot next November.
Yeah.
So yeah, twenty twenty-seven would be the early, if everything went smoothly and it was a definite, yeah, we'd wanna do this, twenty twenty-seven would be the earliest.
And one other thing, I wanted to go, um, we had that computer issue where uh, we, we all kind of picked up our packages. I know the other boards pick up their packages. I don't know if you guys are privy to pick up your own packages, but we could save some decent money for the town. Not, not mailing those out.
Yeah, I don't have a problem picking it up.
Does anybody else have a problem with that?
No.
I mean, do we wanna make a protocol that they just?
Put a mailbox downstairs and they come up with problems, like.
They literally just, oh, 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 well, I mean, yeah, I mean, my.
The only, the only, the only hang up for me is I work in Warwick, so at the time I got, it's.
The bridge, it's like five. Well, I hear they're gonna, I hear they're gonna be open till uh, six P M on Thursdays? Tuesdays?
Yeah, that's sad, that still doesn't help me.
I'm crying, man, I'm trying.
Yeah, we could have, we can have the officers drop it off.
Hand, hand delivered by a, by a local police officer?
Yeah, it's adjourned.
Oh, yeah, uh. Motion to adjourn?